Okay, thank you.
We're good.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to council Monday, October 25th, 2021. Called to me in order at 4:00 PM. As always, I remind everybody to turn off their electronic devices, put them on vibrate mode, if you could, and get ready to the meeting. Thank you. Any additions or deletions to the agenda today? Hearing none, I do have a motion here that council hereby accepts the agenda for Monday, October 25th, 2021. Regular meeting of council circulated amended, move by.
Counselor.
Well, I have counselor vows moved and counselor Lake second. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you very much. Any disclosures of interest today? Hearing none. We do have the minutes of the regular meeting of council. Motion that were held on Tuesday, October the 12th, 2021 are circulate amended. Any arrows or missions in those minutes? I need a mover and seconder, please, to approve.
Counselor.
Thank you.
Counselor.
I've got counselor Lake first, thank you. All in favor?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Carry. Sorry, I got a couple of pens there that they're not working very well. They're they're trying, we haven't been here for a long time, so they're pretty dried up. Sorry about that. There we go. So those counselors, counselor Lake. Everybody was in favor? Thank you. Okay, today we have a special day, of course. We have our student counselors returning after a break from 2020 with the COVID situation that struck out on Marathon, but the whole province of Ontario and the country of Canada, as well as the world. So we didn't appoint counselors last year, but it's exciting to have counselors back with us in 2021, going into 2022 calendar year. So we're going to let our C A O, Mr. Skorchinsky, take the opportunity to swear in our both our young student counselors, Kayden and Lauren and Daryl. The floor is yours. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, your worship. So welcome to both Cade and Lauren. Pretty simple process. Normally, this is something we do in person, in front of council, and of course, having your parents and the public here. But when we do with with photo opportunities, so when we do get to that opportunity, we'll have the photo opportunities and the actual signing of the declaration of office documents at that point. So fairly straightforward process. We'll start with Cade and then we'll move to Lauren. Ms. Lee has sent out your declaration of office. So all I need you to do obviously is turn on your cameras and unmute your microphones and read your declaration of office as it's noted on the sheet that you have, please. So okay, we'll start with you.
Mr. Skorchinsky, you're not on camera. Is there is there a reason why or you're just?
You're holding camera to me.
I can see him, your worship. I'm on.
Okay. Thank you. I'll adjust my screen now. Thanks, sorry.
So Kate, I'll ask you to read your declaration of office, please.
All right. I, Kate Mitchtix, have been appointed to the office of student counselor in the municipality of Marathon. Do solemnly promise and declare that I will truthfully, faithfully, and impartially exercise the office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or award or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interests, direct or indirect, in accordance with the municipality conflict of interest act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty, Queen Elizabeth II. And I will make the solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as made under oath.
Thank you. So obviously, that's been declared before us today here, the 25th of October, 2021, and I'm signing your declaration now, and we'll have you do the same when we're face to face. So congratulations and welcome to town council. So we'll ask that Lauren, you come on screen now, please, and unmute your microphone and read your declaration of office as well.
I, Lauren Tavner, having been appointed to the office of student counselor in the municipality of Marathon, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truthfully, truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or award or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the municipal conflict of interest act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty, Queen Elizabeth II, or the reigning sovereign for the time being. And I make the solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is the same force and effect as made under oath.
Thank you, Lauren. I'm also signing your declaration of now and right now, and we'll have you do the same when we're face to face. So with that, congratulations and welcome to town council. So I'll turn it back over to you, your worship.
Thank you very much, Mr. Skorchinsky, and thank you both, Kayden and Lauren, and welcome aboard, and we're looking forward to to having you come to our council meetings in person. I think we're going to be looking forward to that early 22 to get back in in our chambers. We're always excited to have student counselors to bring your view to our table about what's happening in our community from the youth's perspective. So we look forward to those reports on our council meetings, and I would encourage you to report on whatever you feel comfortable about what's happening at the high school, what's happening in youth in the community that you're engaged with and your social activities, your extracurricular activities, whatever you feel comfortable by bringing to our table is what we want to hear, what's happening to the youth in our community. So welcome aboard and look forward to meeting with you in person as well. Thanks.
Your worship, if I can also just offer on behalf of administration, please feel free to reach out through myself or Ms. Lee's at any time if you have any questions or need any guidance with respect to any council matters. We're going to be putting a binder together for you guys with respect to an orientation package, but please, anytime, reach out to us.
Great, thank you for that. And do you have any questions either of you at this moment? No? Okay, great. I'm sure you got a big lengthy report when it comes up to your portion of the agenda, so that'd be awesome. Okay, thank you. So up next, we have a delegation and report will be submitted by the municipality integrity commissioner pertaining to recently held investigation. This is going to be presented by Peggy Young Lovelace. Good afternoon, Peggy.
Good afternoon, your worship and members of council. If I might proceed?
Absolutely, thank you.
Well, thank you. And I, first of all, I'd like to apologize to council because I always dislike when the first time I get to meet a council is when I'm coming here to actually give a report on an inquiry that we've had to conduct. I actually am a firm believer in the municipal sector, and I really applaud you for the fact that you have youth representation at council and that you're you're listening to their advice and guidance, I think is really important. And I would like to offer that if either of them has questions about the integrity commissioner or our role, that we will certainly provide that at no cost to the municipality. They just need to reach out to us. And on that note, your worship, if I might proceed with this report?
Absolutely, the floor is yours, Peggy. Thank you.
Thank you, your worship. So one of the things I'm going to tell council right now, our practice is that when we do an inquiry, we provide a public report to council. We read it into the public record and then we provide you with a written copy thereafter, usually the morning of, or the next morning, I should say. And so I am not going to read verbatim everything that is in this report because in, you know, I know council meetings are often very overloaded with things that you have to accomplish. So I do not wish to take a pile of your time, but I would like to to go over the main points of this report.
Absolutely.
Okay, so one of the things I'd also like you to know is that we don't have a practice of putting in the name of the the person who has either requested or applied for an inquiry under the municipal act. If someone is applying under the code of conduct, they're recalled, they're called a requestor. If it's under the municipal conflict of interest act, they're they're called an applicant. So in this case, we're dealing with a request under the code of conduct, and it was received by our office. And the allegation is that the mayor contravened the code of conduct by his behavior when he attended the residence of the requestor on or about June the 2nd of 2021. And more specifically, the requestor alleged violations of the municipal act and the mayor's and that the mayor's actions were contrary to the respect initiative found on the town of Marathon's website. The requestor also alleged that in some way, the the actions by the town of Marathon were systemically racist when they failed to lower the provincial flag in response to the discovery of the unmarked graves of the children from the residential schools. So our findings are based on the balance of probabilities, and that's a civil test. That means it it's, I use the 50.01% that it happened or it didn't happen. And so this is not the same test as you would have in a criminal court. This is a civil burden of proof, and it means that we believe something did or did not happen. In this circumstance, based on the evidence before us, we find that when the mayor attended the requestor's residence on June 2nd, 2021, that the mayor was very upset and spoke to the requestor inappropriately, to the point that the mayor was heard yelling at the requestors or at the requestor by a neighbor. These actions are contrary to the code of conduct and specifically the passage that requires elected officials to, when addressing constituents, colleagues, and staff members, members of council will behave in a professional manner. The mayor's actions were unprofessional and not in keeping with those expected of elected officials. The allegation that the mayor engaged in a systemically racist way by failing to lower the provincial flag at the town office in response to the discovery of the graves is not substantiated. The municipality has taken other actions to acknowledge this issue and the circumstance, there is no evidence to support that failing to do this immediately was based on racism. So upon finding the breach of a code of conduct under section 223.4 sub 5 of the municipal act, it permits council to level a penalty of either a reprimand or a suspension of remuneration paid to the member in respect of the service as a member of council for a period of up to 90 days. Council, we typically ask that you hear our report today and at a subsequent meeting, you decide on penalty. At this point in time, based on the allegations and the finding that the mayor did contraven the code of conduct, we are asking, we are recommending that council undergo additional training with respect to ethical behavior and responsibilities under the code of conduct. So during the inquiry process, once we receive an application, we review the request and we determine whether or not it needs to proceed to a full inquiry. Based on the nature of the allegations before us, we felt that it was important to undertake such an inquiry. The matter was assigned to Sean Sparling, who is an investigator that with investigative solutions network, who's an agent of the integrity commissioner, and he interviewed the requestor and three witnesses, as well as the mayor. Additionally, he also reviewed emails and other documentation that is important to this inquiry. Our conclusions are based on the bounds of probabilities, which I've just explained, but also whether about credibility. And so when we look at credibility, we determine this based on whether or not the individual has firsthand knowledge of the situation, whether or not the individual had an opportunity to observe the events, whether or not the individual may have bias or other motive, and the individual's ability to clearly describe events, consistency within the story, the attitude of the individual as they are participating, and any admission of dishonesty. The investigator found the requestor, the witnesses, and the mayor to be credible. This, in our findings, or findings of fact, I should say, the mayor is alleged to have engaged in a racist act by failing to ensure the provincial flag was lowered in response to the discovery of the unmarked graves of children from the residential schools, and that the mayor engaged in unprofessional behavior when he attended the requestor's residence on June 2nd, 2021, to challenge them on their social media post alleging the racist behavior by the municipality in failure, failing to lower the provincial flag. After the remains of the 215 children are found in unmarked graves in Kamloops, B.C., Canadian flags were ordered to be flown at half mast. The provincial government made the same order on May 31st, 2021. Residents of Marathon and the neighboring First Nation were angry, saddened, and frustrated that phone calls were not being returned and that the questions were not being addressed by the town and more specifically, the mayor or the C A O. Of concern was that the C A O was able to make decisions, make the decision of when to bring the flags to half mast as outlined in the town Marathon flag policy. So as an aside, council, we don't deal with allegations about staff. That's a council issue, and so we have not dealt with that in our report. And on Wednesday, June 2nd, the provincial flag was finally lowered to half mast. On June 2nd, 2021, the requestor commented on an existing social media post regarding the provincial flag not being lowered. The comment was made in a Facebook group entitled Marathon Community Notice Board. Social media group is privately run and not affiliated to the town of Marathon. The requestor stated in the post that by not lowering the provincial flag, the actions of the municipality of Marathon, or the town of Marathon, I should say, align with the definition of modern racism. The post did not reference any one particularly, any one particular individual. It was general comment about the ongoing systemic racism that indigenous people endure. On Wednesday, June 2nd, 2021, about 6:40 PM, the mayor attended the requestor's residence. The requestor and the mayor are not friends, and they do not share social circles that would even make them acquaintances. When the mayor attended the residence, he was an unannounced, uninvited, angry and visibly agitated, according to the requestor. The requestor advised the mayor that he needed to stop yelling and to lower his tone of voice, or he would be asked to leave. It was reported that the mayor was standing with his hands on his hips. The requestor and the mayor have had hard conversations in the past over issues surrounding the school board, but this time, the mayor caught the requestor off guard. The mayor advised the requestor that day, meaning the town, were waiting for authorization to lower the flag and that he had been in contact with the chiefs from both neighboring First Nations, trying to sort it out. The mayor stated that he understood that people wanted the flag lowered, but it just was not that easy to do. The mayor said to the requestor that he had spoken to other people and that they appreciated that he had done and or what he had done and told her how, told the requestor how damaging the post was and work and that he had worked for 15 years to build up relations and that this was in danger of being undone as of all the hard work because of this post. The mayor spent most of the conversation telling the requestor that he wasn't racist. The requestor reported that the post was not a personal attack about the mayor, but they could see how he thought it was. The requestor reported that the mayor was condescending, imposing, and that they felt threatened. The mayor was mostly yelling about it being people like the requestor that take to social media when they do not have the facts and do not know what is going on, and more importantly, that you are wrong and I am right. The mayor was making the requestor feel teeny tiny as a person and wear them down. He was trying to scare the requestor from doing something similar again. Witnesses cooperated the requestor's allegations that the mayor attended the requestor's home and was somewhat aggressive and defensive. To be clear, it was reported that the mayor was dominating in conversation. He said he was upset and angry with the requestor over Facebook posts and that he said were bullshit and lies. Pardon my language, your worship. The mayor was very loud, and he said this, and almost to the point of screaming at the requestor. The mayor was asked to lower his voice, or he would have to leave their property. That's again, a repeat of what I've already referenced. And I'm not going to read the rest, your worship, because largely, you did not disagree. You said it happened. You were very forthcoming about it. And I will, I would like to quote one of the things that you did say. The mayor reported to the investigator that, you know, was I frustrated and the voice level higher than normal? Absolutely. Was I angry and mad? Absolutely. Not because I don't get angry and don't get mad, I get frustrated because I'm very passionate about my community, very, very passionate. So yes, my voice level was definitely raised and no doubt about it. The mayor indicated that he did not go to the requestor's residence to tell them to remove the post from Facebook. He went there to relay the facts of the previous three days so that they would understand what transpired. And the mayor also reported other incidents when he actually spoke to people who were posting things that were inaccurate. The social media posts reviewed during this inquiry are provided by the requestor and were comprised of statements from a handful of contributors upset by the municipality not lowering the provincial flag. I'm not going to read them. Additionally, we reviewed email correspondence between the mayor and the neighboring chiefs. And I'd like to quote one of the comments in the email, which says, "Meegwich Rick, emotions are running high. There were reports from survivors that this was the case all across Canada. It was ignored. This revelation in Kamloops just quantifies what those survivors were saying all along. Meegwich Rick." And before I go into our analysis, I have to actually say, your worship, kudos to you. You are probably one of the umpteen investigations that we've done where you've admitted that you did go and do, and we applaud you for being honest.
Thank you for that.
And I have to say, I know that coming here and doing this is not easy for council or for the community to hear, but it is our role. And the importance of being accountable and transparent to the public above all is is critical. And so part of our analysis, when we looked at this, is we considered whether or not the mayor's behavior was actually indeed a contravention of the code of conduct. And the policy says that, and I've read that kind of before, that when you're addressing the constituents, you have to be, do that in a professional manner. Although it's interesting to note that professional is not defined, which is some way good because we can actually look at a broad range of what may be considered professional in in the timeframe. And we find that, based on the evidence before us, that the mayor was not professional. Now, one of the things I want to make very clear is that we have not made any determination as to whether or not the requestor was professional, and that's not our call. It's up to the mayor and or members of council to act in a higher, to live to a level, higher level of behavior than those people that you represent. We do not find that the, when the flag was lowered or the flags were lowered, to be a mark of racism. I think that's something, while it's not our call, we did comment on it because I think it's important at this point in time to say that there were things happening, and it was a timeframe, and it wasn't that council wasn't aware and wasn't doing something because of a biased reason. And so, your worship, barring any questions, that's the short and sweet of the report.
Well, thank you very much for that, Peggy. And I'd ask council if they have any questions of Peggy before we adjourn this portion of the meeting with her. Counselor Lake.
Yeah, thanks, your worship. And thank, thank you for that, Peggy. It's not easy to hear, and I'm sure it's also not easy to be the person delivering a message like that. And and so what I would say is, and the thing that I think about and that I that I heard sort of loud and clear is, mayor, our mayor is probably one of the only mayors I know who will read something on Facebook and actually go talk to you about it. But whatever you've you've posted, he'll go see you and he'll have a conversation. And we've said to him before, that's probably not a good idea because when people post things, there are absolutely zero ramifications for them. You can post whatever you want about a person, and it's not coming back to you. And that the piece that always scares me and I need to remember is, you know, we on council have to remain above that and speak in a way that probably, even if we're angry in our hearts, that we need to keep that level of, use the word professionalism, decorum, whatever it is. And it's so hard when you feel like, you know, you put in the hours that you put in, and then you feel like somebody says something that slights your community. And I, you know what? I appreciate that recognition that, again, we're held to a higher standard because that to me is what, I would never fault the mayor for his passion. I'm glad you read that quote, or for his willingness to engage in his constituents. But will I, what I will take away from this is that reminder that there is in this office a higher calling for how we speak to the folks that we represent. So I thank you for that reminder, and it's pretty sobering just to go through the the experience.
Thanks for that, Counselor. Counselor DeBuchy.
Oh, yeah, just a question. We now have time or we just got this information, so obviously, it's going to take some time to digest. Moving forward, are we on, or is council on a timeline or timeframe where we have to address this issue, either with further training or whatnot? Or is, do we have time to address this? Or is there some kind of limit that we have to abide by timelines?
If I might respond to that, your worship?
Certainly.
So the municipal act requires that the integrity commissioner make the report public and their findings public. Council's only obligation is to really receive our report. Anything we recommend is up to council to decide. And if you choose not to do anything, that's your prerogative. If you choose to do something, that is also your prerogative. There is no timeline. There's nothing carved in stone in the municipal act that says you must do something by such and such a date. I always recommend to council that, you know, the lightest penalties that we impose or request that council impose are there for a purpose, and it's really there to recognize that, yes, you know what? There was a contravention, but we didn't. And yes, it could be seen as serious. Our concern is when we come before council, and we have not been before, we haven't trained council, and we don't feel like it is the, our recommendation to go beyond that. Doesn't mean council cannot. So I apologize in advance, your worship, if council decides to hold you to a higher standard than we did, but that's their prerogative. And I've gone to a council, I made recommendations, and I go to the next meeting where they're actually deliberating them because they asked me just to be there, and they impose penalties that are way more severe than what we've imposed or asked to be imposed. And I went, wow. I found that quite shocking because typically, the reaction we get when the integrity commissioner comes is that council's really upset with our findings, and they're really upset with the process, and they are just not happy, generally speaking. So they they tend to not follow any of the things that we require or we recommend. And I'd like to to just kind of for a minute explain why we recommended training. And I think a lot of that has to do with when we read the report and the team, my team looked at it and we talked about it, and with the experiences that we've had elsewhere, social media is a big thing. And unlike the day when, you know, the member of public had to be at a council meeting or had to write to you to be able to express their displeasure, today, they could do it on social media. And it makes it much more challenging for people, and especially for people of certain personality types, to take it with a grain of salt. Somebody's expressing their opinion, they're entitled to their opinion, just like you're entitled to yours. And one of the things I was hoping that would be accomplished by the training, and I expect the C A O can arrange some kind of training for you that would look at this, is is really to figure out how you react to that and to not engage, to not engage what's going on in social media, to really have a policy. And quite honestly, worship, had you come back to council and said, I'm very dissatisfied with what was said on social media, and council passed a resolution, said, go talk to the person, have at it. Be professional, but then go and do it. And and that's one of the things that council members, including the mayor, in a lot of communities forget, is that they're there representing the people. So even though that their own feelings or their own opinion is not being followed, they can't necessarily go out and do some of the things that they do. And that's why we are encouraging training as opposed to a reprimand or an apology or any of the other things that we could have asked for.
And I appreciate that, Peggy, and I think that is the key. And I spoke to my counsel about the incident right after the situation, informed them what I had done, because I was passionate about the incident and thought that it was more a comment about council as a whole, not Mayor Rick Dumas. So I appreciate that for sure. There was a couple of statements made by the the individual that I disagree with, and I don't know how I challenge that, and I don't really matter to me too with my counsel about the yelling. I have a deep voice as it is, and was I passionate? I told the investigator, Sean, that my voice was definitely raised. But the very first thing I asked the individual after knocking on her door, was it possible for me to speak to her about her post? She then invited me to speak. So maybe I was definitely wrong by attending the residence in my passionate moment. But I was also invited to speak to the individual. So there's a couple of statements that wasn't clear in the report. It might be in the report in full. We'll have to wait and see, but that's just my comment. I do appreciate that. And I want to give council any more opportunities to ask any other questions of Peggy before we close off. Counselor Debushi.
Yeah, I think that the report has been ready to comment. And if and when we have some discussion about it, I think that's the appropriate time where you can make comments about it, Mayor, as opposed to in this form as it stands right now. So I would just ask that maybe administration contact the rest of the other councillors so that we can get a copy of this report or delve a bit more into it because reading it over, I won't say shocking, but reading it over isn't the same as looking it over or hearing it isn't the same as reading it. So at this point, I think that that would be the best course of action right now so that the rest of the council can proceed on with looking at the recommendations and I guess the report.
Yeah, thank you for that, Counselor Debushi. We will have a full copy of that report as Peggy noted, did first thing in the morning, it'll be sent through administration and administration will share with council as a whole. And we could set up a discussion around that and the recommendations from the commissioner's office as well. I don't think this is an issue that there's going to be separation between council and the mayor to discuss. We are a team. I'm the representative of this team to the public. So I believe that I made the mistake and I have to deal with it in regards to the recommendations. But I think as a council, we discuss and move on as a team as we always have in the past. So if there's no further questions, I think we take the opportunity to thank you, Peggy, very much for the report and we look forward to getting the hard copy so we can discuss as a council our next steps and and learning more about this. But I want to make one final comment if I don't mind. And council is fully aware, I am not a social media participant. I set up a Twitter page through the COVID so I can get messages out to the public and I get my messages through the town's Facebook page. I do from time to time get highlights from both my wife and other individuals, my children, about comments being made in the community about myself directly or council. And I've asked them all to stop sharing with me any social media posts, period. Because if people can't come to me directly through administration or the mayor's chair through the town, then there's no need for us to discuss a social issue out there in social media land. I believe that's the way it was done in the past. And I know that social media takes over and runs, but that's why I don't participate in that format.
So if I might, Your Worship, thank you very much for that. But I would like to address one last thing before I leave. When council looks at the recommendations from the report, one of the things I would like to let you, like council know is that the people who are involved in the inquiry don't get to debate the findings of the integrity commissioner. They can, they can file an application with the court if they believe that something has been done inappropriately or outside of a proper procedural fairness. And the other thing is the mayor may attempt to influence you on the recommendations. He may speak to the the general nature of the findings and whether or not he agrees with the recommendation. He may not vote on the recommendation. Whatever council decides, that's a council decision. And it would be considered pecuniary interest at that point. Up till that point, you're able to influence, but you're not allowed to vote.
Certainly, I appreciate that 100%. And I will follow procedure to the T in regards to the findings and the recommendation and council will. I mean, even if I remove myself from the meeting, I'm fine with that. I fully appreciate that. So that will take place. And I know our CAO, Mr. Skorchinsky, is very a policy-driven individual. So we'll make sure we follow all the direct policies within municipality and procedures.
Okay, so thank you for your time, Your Worship and members of council. If you have any questions of me, just please send an email to us.
No, I appreciate that. Thank you very much for the report.
Have a great evening.
Good evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Up next, of course, we have our newly appointed student councillors' reports. I don't know if they've had opportunities to write something up and give us a highlight of what's happening in the world, but we'll start off with Lauren, if you don't mind.
Hi, yeah, we did do up a report of some of the things that have been happening in the school. So going back into school, there are still a lot of COVID-19 regulations. The cohorts are still in place. Masks are still required. Social distancing is still required. Grades nine and 10 and 11 and 12 are separated into the two cohorts. First couple of weeks of the school year, COVID-19 screenings were still required, but they're not currently required for attendance. The Every Child Matters flag was raised in front of the school back in September. We had the first picture day since the 2019 and 2020 school year on October 19th. So that was exciting. And then school clubs are coming back and I know that the gaming club has started again. It's being held in the library, I believe, after school. Student councillors are coming back, obviously, which is pretty exciting. And some efforts are being made currently to develop a sort of GSA adjacent type organization in school.
Great. Thanks for that, Lauren. Up next, we have Kade, who's going to give us a quick overview of what's happening in his world.
Yes. So very exciting. Sports days and school sports have returned to Marathon High School. Vaccinations, well, it's been announced that vaccinations will be required for all the athletes in the upcoming sports seasons, particularly girls volleyball and boys basketball. Hopefully those teams will be heading to OFSA. Just recently, our junior girls' basketball team went away for the first game of the NSSAA Fall season. They went to Terrace Bay on October 20th and they were playing against the Lake Superior High School team. Students are unable to watch the sports currently at Marathon High School, which is quite disappointing, but well, unless they're scorekeeping or flagging. But many of the students were still able to encourage and show support for their school by wearing school colors and just being supportive. Our sports day recently played against the Manitowage team. Marathon senior girls won both of their games and Marathon senior boys lost both of their games sadly. There will be sports on Wednesdays and Thursdays of this week. We're just about hitting the end of the quad semester. Exams are going to be held on November 8th and November 9th. And the new quad semester will begin on Thursday, the 11th.
So great. Thanks for that. So now going into our meetings in the future, we'll be addressing you as both Counselor Cavanagh and Counselor Mishkix. So that's, we keep it pretty formal at the table. So we try to address each other as formally as we can in regards to your new roles. So now that you're sworn in, we'll recognize you as councillors with our Marathon Municipal Council. So both thank you for them reports. And does anybody have any questions of either Counselor Cavanagh or Mishkix? Great. Thank you very much for those reports. Up next, we have a administration report on a copy of the report is for Mrs. Lee's in regards to the accessibility training policy, AD 0016.
Thank you, Your Worship. As per the Accessibility for Ontario's with Disabilities Act 2005, or also known as the AODA, every municipality in Ontario is required to have a policy that details the training plan for all municipal employees, volunteers and members of council. With regard to training, each section of the Integrated Accessibility Standards Regulation and the Ontario Human Rights Code as they relate to the duties of their job. The policy will outline the training content and the timelines for this training. Training records will be maintained for all current and new employees. And this record will be part of the accessibility report that is presented to council annually. The options are to accept policy AD 0016, which is the accessibility training policy as presented. Option two or option B is to approve the policy but with amendments. Your administration recommends that option A be approved and that policy AD 16 accessibility training be accepted as presented and that a copy of this policy be placed in the town's policy guideline manual and be made available on the town's website and at the town office upon request.
Thank you for that report. I do have a motion here that council hereby accepts the attached report and recommendation on the accessibility training policy AD 0016. And that the policy AD 0016 accessibility training policy be approved as presented. And for that a copy of this policy be placed in the town's policy guideline manual and made available on the town's website and at the town office upon request. Move by. Counselor Lake and Counselor Valance. Counselor Debushi, you got a question?
Yeah, I remember when I was working, we used to have to review the policy every year as part of our annual training. But the actual course itself that was offered online wasn't as in-depth as it was. Moving forward, what is the timeline for, I'll say even our new councillors, as now they would be considered councillors, their training timelines or if they had training in other accessibility training, will that qualify also or is it specific to the town?
To answer your first question about the timelines, the act is very, all the act states is that training will happen as soon as possible or as soon as practical. And it is for the town of Marathon. So everybody does need to take training again, even if they've taken it somewhere else.
Okay. Anybody else? No further questions? I do want to call a question on this motion. All in favor?
Yes.
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 Carrie, thank you. Up next, I have a motion here for the following check runs to be approved for payment. Accounts payable in the amount of $743,789.91 and payable in the amount of $264,342.95. Move by.
Counselor Shingra.
Counselor Debushi.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of those check runs? Hearing done, call a question, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Great, thank you. I have a motion here that the council of the town of Marathon proclaims October 29th through to November 7th, 2021 is Ontario Garlic Week in and for the town of Marathon. As you know from the resolution that was sent out in summary of a promotion of Ontario garlic and garlic farmers to promote garlic use and eating. And as we all surely enjoy garlic, not so much with friends, but we do enjoy garlic and Marathon Food Establishments and Garlic Farmers Ontario Week to make it happen. Would appreciate your assistance in promoting garlic and the use of garlic specifically Ontario garlic grown in Ontario. So any movement second to put down on the floor?
Counselor Lake.
Thank you. Questions? I see Mr. Skorchinsky. Yes?
We're out of sync on the agenda.
Yeah?
Yes, Your Worship, it's, we're on item 14 and we skipped over item 11.
Well, the reports, I'm sorry. Yes, I didn't flip my page over yet. So I'll just hold that off with Counselor Lake. Counselor Valance is moving a second, we'll get back to that motion on the garlic. Counselor Lake will provide a verbal update on originally extended DSAB meeting.
I thought maybe you just didn't want to hear from me, Your Worship?
No, no, I'm sorry. I didn't flip my page. I was getting ahead of myself.
So on last Thursday was our DSAB board meeting in Thunder Bay. It was exciting and notable in the sense that it was the first one I've been able to attend in person. They put up all kinds of Plexiglas barriers. So we were kind of like in little individual penalty boxes. So it was a strange experience, but at least it was in person. And some of the highlights that I thought I'd bring back was we had a very long presentation at the beginning of the DSAB meeting around homelessness in the region. A great deal of it was spent looking at Thunder Bay where the majority of sort of those chronically homeless folks live. And some of the successes the DSAB has had, we've reduced numbers almost in half in terms of chronically homeless. The interesting conversations though were around, you know, as the region booms, we're seeing more and more people squeezed into precarious situations. We're seeing that in Marathon now with it's harder and harder to come by a house, harder and harder to come by an apartment. So we sort of asked as a board that the DSAB watched the regions in terms of that burgeoning class of folks in precarious housing situations. And they were, they were interested and aware that those things were happening. So I thought that was good. The other thing that the council needs to be aware of is one of the pressures around the municipal levy is around insurance. The insurance has gone up at the DSAB for, especially for the properties. It's going to be around between 13 and 16% increase, which will put pressure on the budget for sure for the municipal share. That percentage of increase is much lower than what we're experiencing at the municipal level, but it still will be pressure. The other issue that probably the Americans speak to more than me is so for example, Marathon's municipal nonprofit housing mortgage expires in 2024. All of the funding agreements were based on these mortgages and were time sensitive. So DSAB is working towards how do we make these these organizations function after the expiry of these mortgages? It is a looming problem in Ontario. There's been about 6,500 housing units across the province no longer offered because of these expiring mortgages. So it is an issue on the horizon for Marathon. So we discussed that and are trying to make some movements forward. And then finally, the other piece that I was very interested in that they talked about is so we've seen in the housing sector that kind of that homelessness protection, the rent geared income. But the thing that Sault Ste. Marie is doing, their DSAB, is trying to make homeownership possible for low-income individuals. So how do we get not just into public housing, but how do we make homeownership affordable? So there's a pilot program in Sault Ste. Marie that our DSAB is watching in the hopes that if that pilot is successful, we can move towards homeownership as something that's attainable for everyone in society. So a good meeting really focused on housing and some of the regional challenges we're having right now. So we go back next next month for a two-day budget meeting and that's when we'll really get Marathon's share of the levy. So that obviously is going to be the thing that interests everybody probably more than anything.
Thank you for that report, Counselor Lake. Any questions of Counselor Lake on his report from DSAB? Seeing none, I do have a question or more of a comment around the mortgages. You're absolutely right. We have discussed in the past, maybe there's something you can bring back to your board next meeting. Counselor Lake is is looking at using those funds and continuing to get the province to help assist with the different nonprofits or housing authorities in the province to transfer those already being funded mortgages to new property builds. And that might resolve some of the homelessness and home issues if they can reflect and start the construction now of those new properties. And then 2023, 2024, 2025, as some of these mortgages come due, those mortgages get transferred over to the new properties rather than the non-funding model. So that's a discussion that we've had, but it hasn't really taken any traction. But it's a good opportunity, I think, for DSABs to recognize that. And one other thing in regards to DSAB, I would encourage the chair to write a letter to NOMA indicating that the impact for the insurance costs as well, because NOMA is addressing the residential, oh, sorry, the municipal increases. So this is something where DSABs, not only for Thunder Bay, but Rainy River and the Canora District, DSABs will be impacted as well for the insurances. So there's a couple of things that maybe your board can address through a letter to NOMA.
Thank you for that, Your Worship.
Thanks. Okay, up next, we have Counselor Debushi and Shingra. So go Counselor Debushi first on library board overview.
No, I wouldn't be able to speak to this. I was unable to attend that meeting.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Shingra.
Yeah, so what we decided at the last board meeting is like the library board's done previously is we'll bring a short report to council after every every meeting, just on the different programs that are happening and any major, major things happening at the board to keep everybody kind of in the loop. So I've got three points for tonight's meeting. So the first thing is tomorrow, the library is holding an adult craft night. So there's, they're making welcome mats. You can register. There's a registration link right on Facebook. If you're not on Facebook, I'm sure you can just contact the library directly and they can help you get set up on there. The other thing that the library is doing right now is, is working on some focus groups. The program's called Valuing Northern Libraries. And I'm just going to read out a section here of their toolkit to make sure I get the wording just right. So the toolkit is designed to measure the value of public libraries and their role as community hubs. Building capacity for healthy, resilient people and places, especially in rural, northern First Nation and Francophone communities. So the library here is going to be using, the goal is to use about three focus groups, exploring seven key areas. So that's cultural integrity and regional identity, social inclusion, cognitive and literacy. Health and wellness, engaged citizens and safer communities. Entertainment and enjoyment and economic development. So like I said, the goal is to have three of those focus groups with a mixture of staff, library board members, patrons and community members. So if anyone's interested in participating in those focus groups, just reach out to the library. And the final thing is that the board has forwarded a draft M O U to town administration, and they're looking forward to. To finalizing that work and working more closely with the township.
Great, thank you for that. Any questions of Counsel Shingra? And I just want to share with our councillors, newly appointed student councillors, that you by any means can step in anytime and raise your hand if you have a specific question on any reports that. And I know it's all Brian New and you will maybe eventually get comfortable with the reports being presented, but by all means, if you have a question on anything that's been reported on council. Don't be afraid to put your hand up and ask that question. I do have a question in regards to the library. Oh, Counsel Lake first, sorry.
Yep, I just was going to ask a question, but first for the student councillors too, one of the things that certainly I felt really daunting about the meetings is they're very formal. And if you have questions about how it's going to work. You just ask the mayor and he will tell you, you know, the structure of how you can ask questions and to whom. And I think that's really an important part is, is don't let the formality of the meeting stop you from asking a question. My question through the chair would be, so the M O U that you mentioned, that's, is that related to the relationship between the town and the. And the library, is that what they've, they've put forward?
Yeah, so without going into too many details, because it is a draft, it is, it is about that and clearing up some of the communication lines and. And the roles of the library and the roles of the municipality and just working on, on making that relationship between the two. Organizations a little bit stronger and a little bit more clear.
That's awesome. That's very proactive. Thank you.
Thanks. I've had a resident ask me just today because of the meeting tonight, what the library hours are under consistency, are they being consistent? I know there was the vaccination passports issue that the library was dealing with. But is the hours are consistent, Monday to Friday hours right now?
To be honest, I'm not, I'm just going to double check exactly what the hours are. I know they are keeping them consistent. And they did speak about at the last meeting that they've had about, they've laminated and printed off of almost over two hundred vaccines, and that was as of our last meeting. So. Yeah, so library hours, Mondays, eleven to three, Tuesdays, one to six, Wednesdays, one to six, and Thursdays and Fridays, eleven to three.
So the library is only open four hours a day based on the COVID situation still, or is it just because. That doesn't seem like many hours being provided in the library for staff if there are other duties, what's, what's happening in regards to the reduction in hours?
So I, when I've been at the board meetings, that hasn't been something that's come up that was previous to myself, so I don't know if. If Counselor Tabushi has any background on, on those hours or if he can provide information on that.
Yeah, part of the hours, extended hours were for programming, and since programming is non-existent. In a sense at the library, that was the reason why there was some reduction in hours. We have full, full hour, full staffing now in place, so the hours should be, should be returning to normal. And with the, I guess, the beginning of adult programming, hence the adult craftings, I can see the hours being stabilized and moving forward.
Yeah, I guess is what the, the issue than the announcement that the Ontario government is opening up facilities to fully vaccinate individuals to full capacity. I guess the library will be reflective of those, those changes as well, then I guess as our board members. I would encourage you to, to have the library open up at regular hours again. Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Any more questions on that? Nope. Thank you for your reports and look forward to future ones. Again, go back to the proclamation for Garlic Week in, for Marathon as well as the Province of Ontario. October 29th through to November 7th, and that was a move by Counsel Lake, a second by Counsel Valance. Any questions of that motion? Nothing? Great, and I'm sure everybody enjoys garlic. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. That's approved. Anything else before we adjourn? We do have a strategic planning meeting at five P M, so I would encourage everybody to. To come over to the council chambers, we are going to do a session together for strategic planning update.
Your worship, we knew there is an item fourteen B, please, with respect to the Ontario Good Roads Board.
Right, yes, nominations, yes.
I can highlight that if you wish.
Yes, you don't mind, thank you. Jeez, I'm sorry, I'm looking at, I got it covered up, my other part of my. Mr. Skorch.
Yeah, so the Ontario Good Roads Association is a provincial. Organization that deals really with infrastructure and roads planning. And it is representative of both municipalities at the council and the administrative level. And this year, there's two openings for northern, for two vacancies in the northern zone. Which includes the District of Thunder Bay, so of course that would be the town of Marathon inclusive. So what they're asking for is if you have an interest in sitting on that board. That you submit an application to the Good Roads Nominating Committee by November the nineteenth. So in this case, if you do have an interest, please let me know. It would need a resolution from council and we could place it on the next agenda in November. So. Two vacancies available if you do have an interest in sitting on that board representing the town of Marathon as a northern zone representative.
Yeah, thank you for that. Sorry for missing that. The, the Roma board also has a vacancy due to Kevin Holland, Mayor Holland had to step down because he. Announced that he was running for provincial politics and under the policy of NOMA, you have to step down from your position, so as of that, he also had to step down from Roma. That policy, sorry, that the board appointment closes today. I was thinking about it, but again, it's a lot of travel. And Roma is an organization that we're much more in tune with now than Ontario Good Roads. Ontario Good Roads, we haven't attended in a few years because of the Roma taking over and they split up. They were together as Ontario Good Roads in Roma. And a couple of years back, they split up and we've been more attending Roma, so Counsel Lake?
Yeah, thank you, your worship. So I don't know my asphalt from my elbow, but we got like our public works manager does, is this only for elected officials? Or can we nominate folks that are in administration who just have that expertise and I think would be a much better fit to sit on something like that?
Yeah, we are a member of the Good Roads. I would say to be completely honest, I don't think, you know, administration has traditionally been interested. We just don't have the time to be completely truthful. But as a member of the organization, that's, you know, we do have the opportunity, you know, administratively or through council to sit on the board. But we utilize Good Roads quite extensively, you know, at the administrative level from a resource perspective, so that's why, that's how we, you know, utilize our participation as a member in good standing.
Okay, any other questions at council? So if there is any interest, you have to get back through to administration, we can bring it up for discussion at a future council meeting. Okay, with that being said, we are going to adjourn at the hour of four fifty-eight P M. Move by.
Counsel Val.
Counsel Tabushi.
Counsel Val, second by Counsel Tabushi. Thank you all. Have a good night. Thank you again, student councillors.
Congratulations, Lauren and Kate.
Board.